There has been discussion at the last meeting about, and this was our special meeting last week, about potentially painting Black Lives Matter on a city street in some place. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor for discussion. Rick, I know that there will be some questions in terms of legally, what can we do? And what are some of the, I won't call them straight, but what are some of the guidelines in terms of what we're looking at here? Rick, would you like to start, or you want me to?
Sure. I mean, there are really no particular guidelines. It's really, you know, it's city property, and the city can determine what it wants to do on a particular property. My concern, as we discussed earlier this afternoon, Mayor, is the concern raised by Nick, and that is make sure that nothing interferes with the safety of traffic, and that is covering up any stripes or any those sorts of things, especially at that particular intersection. I think that we can make the argument that there's a slippery slope, and that we have to open this up to future requests, and may subject ourselves to, you know, some level of concern down the road. But, you know, I think we can handle that down the road if this is something important to the council, and I think we should move forward with those provisos that we talked about, Brian, and that is keep it in one lane, move it up from the intersection, maybe near the fire station and towards the city hall. I think your plan to ask the CSEA union to help out first and see what their interest in doing that first is a good one, and then reach out to local artists or volunteers once we have cleared sort of our city employees' interest in doing this and helping out.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Katie Solman.
I'm wondering, why do we want to do this on the street and not the sidewalk? The street, it just seems like whatever we put there, it's going to get worn off really quickly. And I don't like the idea of driving over Black Lives Matter. Have we talked about the sidewalk at all?
I, well, I don't know the difference between cleaning a sidewalk when the process is completed and, you know, resealing a road is different, but, you know, I can see those kind of concerns, but...
Bruce Tyler.
I'm in favor of this conceptually. I was always thinking about maybe we could put it in, you know, both lanes so people can see it in a way which direction they're coming from, but I think this is one of those things that keep, I think we need to involve all the people in these discussions that don't look like me, because I have a lot to learn, and Katie brings up a good point. And I really want to do something well intentioned that would be perceived as not well intentioned. So I think we need to keep, we need to do this right. We don't necessarily have to do it tomorrow. So I like the idea, and I think we need to hear from some other folks on how to proceed to this. That's my opinion.
I like that.
Further discussion. Kat McCarthy.
Yeah, so I would agree that the intent certainly is a good one, and I know it was raised by a member of the community at our last meeting. So got a little bit of community feedback, it might be a good idea to get a little bit more feedback from a diverse audience, certainly. But it does seem like a good plan to try and do something like this forward if there's interest there.
Very good. Nick Doby?
Hey, yeah, Nick Doby here. I think we're at least entertaining what's on the table here. Just keep me in the loop of the conversations, and I can probably provide some of the things that we don't want to do as far as traffic safety and roads go and stuff like that. The message, you know, I have no problem with any of that. And what I just don't want to do is I don't want to take individuals that are traveling on the road and make them confused in any manner. So just clue me in on what you guys are thinking, and I'm sure we can make something happen.
Very good. Would council choose to recognize a community member by the name of Tim Bennett?
I would.
Good. Let's go ahead and listen to what Tim's got to say. See if I can... Tim, are you there?
I am here. Good evening, good evening. Originally, when I thought of the idea before last week's special meeting, and let me give a disclaimer, even though I do own the Cortlande Voices, this has nothing to do with the Cortlande Voices, Tim Bennett, who came in '03 as a SUNY Cortlande alum, or as a CEA president in '03, graduated '07, who moved away, decided to come back and live here and be active in the community. But these kind of things, you know, the Black Lives Matter movement didn't start just a couple, you know, weeks ago, months ago, years ago, like, you know, there's been injustice for many years, you know? And the thing is, I think with the recent events that have happened, and, you know, every day the world gets smaller and smaller due to social media, things like that, and George Floyd, I think people had enough, you know? And I think that is why people have spoken up. I personally saw, you know, the artwork in Washington DC, and I thought, wow, that would be something if that could come to here, you know? And I was already planning to reach out and ask how that could be done, because I saw in Syracuse, a lawyer with a private firm, the Marone, I think his practice is called Marone Practice or something like that, a Marone law firm. They're putting money up to make that happen in Syracuse. Since I said that I wanted, you know, for that to happen after you guys speaking on Black Lives Matter last week, you know, like I said, I had no idea it was going to come up, but since it came up, I said my piece. Since then, we have places like SUNY Oswego actually doing it, you know, State College, they did it on their campus. It's kind of like around you. And I get, I do understand how people said, you know, you don't want to confuse people on the road, things like that. Whether it's in the road, whether it's in the sidewalk, whether it's a mural, it's just even just feeling of the care and just the act of, you know? And even though it's done, it doesn't stop there. Start a conversation, you know? I mean, there's many other events, you know? I know a lot of people, you know, when the protest against, you know, the police brutality and the different things occurred, many jumped against it. But when you really look at things like, I don't know, somebody has a, at the cancer walk, American Cancer Society, Real Life for Life, people aren't saying, heart attacks too, you know, American Heart Society and things like that, people come up with all these different things, and to be honest with you, nothing is coming out of a bad place. It's just saying, you know, like, how can we stop these things from happening? How can we start the conversation? How can we, I don't know, just, this is happening a lot. Since that last meeting, a couple more people have been found either home or, you know, and not, obviously, this is not local, but these things are happening, you know? And, you know, and let me also give another disclaimer, I'm a child of a cop. She started 25 years before she died. So that's another angle too, you know? But that's what I'm seeing. I mean, there's other events, you know, that might be connected to other, whether it be races or ethnicities, you know? You have, I think it's St. Anthony's, you know, where there's spaghetti and good fried dough and things like that, that's over by East Side Baker. St. Waldrich's, you know, that's a big event. And when it happens with, when the college kids are here, there's the real one for St. Practice Day, you know, those things, you know? There's all these, there's all these different things in these movements, and there's not really a pushback against it, everybody embraces it. And this is something for good, nothing for bad, you know? There's no ill will, no, no nothing. You know, these are situations that have happened, you know? And, I mean, unfortunately, you know, I've had things happen to myself. I'm very blessed, you know, because not just from the news, but from only the news, but I know phone booths, and there's a reason why I'm telling you this. I do events sometimes four or five hours away. I get tired, I go to a rest area. I honestly can say, I honestly, I honestly, sorry if I was pointing out to my equipment, I honestly can say that I've had, I've been, even in this local area, I've had police knock on the door of my window with a hand on the hip, and I'm sleeping. How dangerous am I? I'm sleeping. These are, these are things that happen, you know? And, I mean, the conversation, I don't think that should hurt anybody, and I'm sorry that I'm talking this long, very passionate on it, I just want to see better, you know? It shouldn't be that, I mean, and we spoke about the chamber and all these different things, it shouldn't be that people have to beg for opportunities. I'm sorry if I pulled too long, but if you want to make it an agenda thing, or anyone else has a conversation, we can have it. But I'm willing to do whatever to start these conversations, and if it can't be city-funded, if it's not to be privately funded, I'll throw something too. Whether that's me personally making it happen or somebody else, I just want to see more opportunities for people. And because a lot of times, opportunities aren't coming for many people that look like myself, you know, a black man.
Tim, thank you for sharing. Katie Solman has had her hand up.
I'm sorry, Katie.
You're caught, but I did mute a couple people on council because there was feedback. I'm going to mute you again, Tim, just trying to make sure that the audio comes through clear so that everybody can hear. Katie, you're on.
Tim, I definitely want to have a conversation, and I don't want to dodge this at all. I just want to make sure that we, very white council, do the right thing and don't go off doing what we think is right. I want to make sure that we talk to people and get feedback and do what makes them feel honored and included in the community, because this has been an oversight for far too long.
Very good, and we'll go to John Bennett. Hang on, John.
Thank you, Mayor. To begin with, and I spoke quite a bit with Tim last week, so Tim knows exactly how I feel about this, and I do fully support this. So this is nothing more than me being a messenger. I reached out to Nikon last week, and one of the top attorneys at Nikon laid, sent me back an email. Basically, what he says in his email is, yes, if the city was to do the city time, the city employees were completely protected. But this is what he said. However, and again, I'm just the messenger here. However, if a city were to consent to a third party to do so, then First Amendment comes into play. Accordingly, the city would be in violation of the First Amendment if it selectively licensed political messaging by allowing one group and denying another group. He ended by saying, as a side note, the political activist group Judicial Watch filed a suit last week against the District of Columbia after the district denied its application to paint the slogan, "No one is above the law" on a DC street. And so they're alleging that DC, Washington DC, is violating their First Amendment rights. So again, I'm just the messenger. I fully support this. In fact, Tim knows again too, I spoke to him at quite length about this. I volunteered my time and a possible donation, but I just want everybody on council and the public to know that by going to a third party, we could risk another group, a political group, coming in and wanting to make this thing type of statement. I have, well, I deny the crystal ball, so I'm not going to say that would happen or would not happen. Painting something like Black Lives Matter on a street is different than anything to do with relay of life, for life, charity, or if somebody said in an email to me, a shamrock, those are all different, that's not political. This could be considered political. Again, I fully support this, but I feel it's my obligation to make sure that message is out there, so you do know. Thank you.
Hey, that Nick Doby, hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to also let Tim know that maybe, I'm not saying as an alternative, but we also do the banners over Court Street and Union Street and stuff like that. You know, we do them for a bunch of different entities. I don't know how Rick would feel, but, I mean, we hang a lot of people's stuff, and that's always an option, and instead of looking at the road, it's right out on plain sight, you know? So just something to think about.
Mr. Tyler.
First of all, Tim, I want to say that I'm sorry that you had those interactions you spoke of, you deserve better. And this is just, what we're talking about now is really just baby steps, in my opinion. We have a lot more listening to do, and then trying to figure out what we're going to do after we learn a lot more. So I fully support this, Nick has a good idea, but I'm glad, I'm glad Tim spoke up. Thank you, Tim.
I'm more in favor of the banners, I think it'd need longer lasting, and I think if people would see it more. But I think if we're going to put the banners up, we better do it in a separate place, so when we do have other functions, we're not taking their banner down, you know what I mean? I think it wouldn't do them any justice, or any of us any justice, if we had to pull another location, I mean, put a permanent banner up.
Yeah, and I didn't mean it in lieu of, I just meant...
Yeah, I think Tim, but, yeah, that's great.
Tom Michaels.
I think that if Tim was to, I'd get a word out there to, if someone started a GoFundMe page, that would certainly support his effort, then some of us would probably move along pretty quickly.
So the idea of fundraising in terms of financial support, I guess one of the questions that we need to target first is what are we looking at? Are we talking about painting on the road? Are we talking about banners or some sort of street sign discussion? Is there a preference in terms of what is recommended? And I'm going to look for comments in the group chat as well. But, Tim, if you want to weigh in, council has recognized you, somebody else, council, what are the thoughts in terms of ways to move forward?
It's Tim Bennett. To be honest with you, I mean, if, in the meantime, if there needs to be some look into things with your legal team as far as the road or sidewalk or something like that, that's fine. If a banner is okay, tell me the specs and what's allowed to be done, if it has to be purchased from a certain vendor or something like that, and I'll do it. I'll follow all the rules, whatever has to be done. I'm willing to buy multiple of them. And just to put this out there, and this is the only thing that I personally support, you know, remember when I bought those events, the from the Court and Downland Partnership, you know, that was going to kids, with part of it going to the WCA or whoever sold. So I'm under a little nice association with Courtland, so these are, these are constant things that are being pushed. But I just feel like by having, by having, not a pun, but by having a voice, do you know what I'm saying? And being able to reach a lot of people, I'd be foolish not to, because when I see it happening to others, when, like I said, you know, I've seen it happen to myself. And I'm going to give another disclaimer, this doesn't always happen, but when this happens, obviously, you see everyone, you know? So I don't, I don't want, I don't want anyone on the department to take it to heart what I'm saying, but these things do happen, because it's not, it's not every officer, it's not every, but these things do happen, you know? When it was, when I believe it was, I think the CDC or whoever said, oh, just get a mask, if you can't afford a mask, get a bandana. I'm sorry, but if you are a person of color with a black t-shirt or whatever, and you're seen with that bandana, and a lot of times, you will be, you will be, you know, stereotyped. Coronavirus or not, you know? Coronavirus or not, I know that myself, I can't do that, you know? Six-six-two-twenty. I mean, as cheap as anybody's bigger than me in his, you know, in his lineup, do you know what I'm saying, out of these officers? So with that being said, I'm already a bigger person. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want people having to parade over something goddamn happening to me. And unfortunately, I have to take those steps. And I've been taught to take those steps. So with that being said, I have to, I'm just saying. Sorry about that.
So Troy has a comment, and then I'd like to ask council to recognize Melissa Kaiser, but Troy first.
Timothy?
Yes.
Are you in favor of the banners rather than the painting on the street? I mean, so we know which direction to head, or...
I'm saying, at least in this motion, I mean, at this moment, I would love to get, I mean, if I could get the sign, that'd be beautiful, and if we can continue to see, or if I have to look into whatever, whatever needs to be done for possibly someday that happening, sure, you know? I'm not, I'm not closed minded, because something is better than nothing, but it's moving a step forward. You have to, you know, you have to crawl before you walk, you walk before you run, you know? So if we're moving in the right direction, that's great. But, yeah, that's, that's how I personally feel, but I can't speak for, and to be honest with you, I can't speak for every person of color, because every person feels different, you know? But many will tell you a lot of the same stories, if not possibly worse than I have said. And many might tell you it more wrong than I have said, because I took my time, so...
So with council approval, I'd like to recognize Melissa Kaiser.
I'll mute myself.
Melissa, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
There you are.
So first of all, thank you guys so much for having me. I know that you guys aren't super familiar with me, but I'm one of the leaders, one of the dual leadership in the Black Lives Matter of Cortlande County. So I wanted to bring up a couple of things about the Black Lives Matter sign, and it's going to be raised a lot around what is going on right now. So when, for something that's simple as a sign, I want you guys to put yourself in the position of someone of color. For you to just pass a legislation or to come to an agreement about a sign that's unhealthy and it's uncomfortable, and it's a lot of things that unfortunately people of color have to go through every day. So what I would like to do is, I understand that there is a lot that goes with it, I understand there's a lot of messiness that goes with it, but if we are going to continue to improve the lives of black people or people of color or indigenous people in your community, we need to see that something as simple as putting a sign on the street is doable. Otherwise, we really don't have a whole lot of hope for making any significant changes in our community. One of the things that I want to address is someone saying, driving over Black Lives Matter. And that, I understand, is coming from a wonderful place of concern, but it's not really something that we're going to be picking apart. What we're picking apart right now is our leadership's ability to be able to come through for small things like this, because at the end of the day, please don't hold it against me, but let's call it what it is, it's a beautiful overture. It doesn't change anything, but what it does is put leadership in a position where they can show people of color in their community that they are valued. And I would like to challenge council that instead of, you know, sitting and bickering and wondering if somebody's First Amendment rights are going to be protected, like, you have, the rights of so many people of color have not been protected for so long, it's really time to make a significant stand, decide where you want to be in terms of situations like this, the type of leadership that you want to be to show the people of color in your community, that you want to do something, even if it is an overture, but show them the work that goes into it, because this is the kind of work and the kind of problems that we go through with our lives every day. So what I don't want is, as a person of color in this community, and as one of the faces of Black Lives Matter, I don't want to hear all of the red hate, I don't want to hear all of the griping. I want to hear some solution based incentives on how it's going to be done in a way that includes the people of color in your community, and in a way that you stand with the people of color in your community to get this one thing done, okay? So that's all I'm going to say, and if anything else, I'll mute myself.
Melissa, follow us.
First of all, thank you, Melissa, because it's exactly the kind of feedback that I need, and I think it follows you. So in that vein, I would, I would support Black Lives Matter on Main Street, or maybe Court Street, wherever we decide. If we put it on Court Street, I want it in both lanes, and then, you know, maybe Melissa should get in touch with the mayor and Nick and sort of coordinate how this is, what it's going to look like and where we're going to put it, then let's just do it. Hate doesn't cost that much.
Jackie, you're muted. Are you trying to make a comment?
Billy Zander. And I am sure, you know, with the city's help, there would be lots of volunteers to step forward to see if that's... I'm sure. About.
Very good. Now I have Tim Bennett asking for five more seconds, and I'm not going to start the timer, I'm going to unmute you both, Tim.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Another thing I was going to say is, and it's unfortunate, and I'd be willing to hear from the groups if they feel different, but until, I honestly feel like until I purchased the voice, there was no media actually covering these types of things. And you can go back to the archives and look, you know what I mean? Whether that's, whether that's, you know, whether that's the paper, or whether that's the, whether that's the radio, you know? And that's not a knock to them, but, I mean, come on, you know? These are, these are, these are things, like when Reed, when Reed Cleland did the Black Lives Matter event, the kids, the kids who put it down, him and some of the other people said, no one would respond to us. And I said, who'd you reach out to? And they, they didn't, they didn't tell me, I asked if they'd reached out to the radio, they said no. But they did reach multiple times to the paper. I went Facebook Live 20 minutes later, you know, one reporter went by, took photos. Like 20 minutes or half after that, they went, you know, when different things go on on campus. And why, you know what I mean? Everybody, I don't know, I just put, I'll just put it like this, I think that more, more to be said, and it doesn't just have to come from the voice, and that's all, that's all I'm saying, I'm not trying to be biased. I'm saying people reach out to me, speaking, oh, I don't want to wear a mask, and people, people reach out for all kinds of things, and I try to measure, I would listen to someone who has a different position than mine, or a different view than mine. I'm not going to say I would personally agree with it, but being in, you have to listen to all parties, whether you agree or not, you know? But I do find it, I do find it interesting that many topics aren't covered. You know, you have to think like that too. You know, if news stations, if the news stations didn't play these different things and show these different things, would you know? That's the job of the media, to report, whether it's something you like or not. You know, just as if, just as it's, you know, the, you know, well, mayor, it's over, you're the mayor, I'm sure there's people that you love, there's people that you don't care about in this community, but it's your, it's your position to, you know what I mean? Try to do the best that you can for this community, you know? But same for officers, same for doctors, things like that, do the best that you can in the area. And I'm sorry, you know, I went a lot over five seconds, but I just looked, but I'll be quiet now, sorry.
Five and a half, maybe six, nine.
But I, but I think...
Thank you, Ted.
And thank you to Melissa for her comments, I mean, I've seen her before, I personally don't know her, but I thank you for everything she said in, for you guys for being open to hearing her out.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I've seen a couple of hands, I'm going to go Katie and then Troy, and then, I believe, Bill Carton.
During our discussion, I've been looking at pictures on the internet of other streets with Black Lives Matter written on them, and they cover both languages, and they're so massive, it's not something that you would stop and try to read, it just kind of absorbs all your vision. And so I think that that would be such a huge statement, and a great thing for a little city to do, to show where we stand. And then the matter would be, which street? which street? How big?
I'm with you, I'm with you, Katie.
And who's gonna do it? So from what John said, from what I understand is if the city takes it on, if it's our project, um, you just don't want it to be a third party's project. Is that right, John?
As I said, I'm just a messenger, I'm not legal counsel. Um, so I, I can't state, I support it. And I agree with you, and on the full street, instead of a half a street, it's just, again, I'm a messenger. Personally, I think maybe Court Street.
I think in the intersection.
But again, do it though, do it anyways. Whatever's decided, I go along with.
So I'm gonna come back. Troy, you had your hand up earlier.
I think we've heard from everybody that we need to make a decision tonight, what we're doing instead of prolonging this.
Okay, and then, uh, Bill Carpenter, did you, Nick has his hand up, but going to Bill next. Did you have your hand up, Bill? Oh, you're on mute. Hang on. Why can I not unmute you? Seems to take a second. There you go, Bill.
Good?
Good.
I, I think the banner's a good idea. Um, I think it, we're doing the Get Week Project, we have that, a banner, uh, the October, you know, on Oakland Fest. I think it sends a message, everybody goes down Main Street, it's a main thoroughfare. I mean, a lot of people won't go down Court Street. I just think it's a better advertisement to have it on Main Street, right, a, a banner.
Uh, Nick Doby had a hand up, and then back to Bruce Tyler.
I just wanted to say that Court at Church is the DOT's intersection. That's all, is, we don't strike that, that's, um, not our signal, uh, traffic control device, so Court Street's ours, I just wanted to let you guys know that that intersection is not.
Thank you. And then Bruce?
I have a thought on the banner, but I'm listening to you, Melissa especially. I would like to, uh, go ahead and, and, uh, paint it on the road in the meantime, and let's just do it. And, uh, I'd have, I'd ask Melissa to contact you and put her in contact, echo Nick. And, uh, you know, so we get it done right, and let's do it. That's, that's what I'm seeing, man.
Uh, John Bennett?
Um, I would suggest if it's gonna be painted, um, how about, um, the section of Main Street between Court and Court Laxton?
Yeah, I like that.
I think we just gotta pick a street, we can hurry down the street all night long, I'm, 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 I'm gonna hurry down the street.
That's true, too.
I like John's suggestion.
I, I just wanna make sure we're getting input from other people and that, you know, so we're not, I think we should agree, let's do this, but let's listen to some other people in terms of where we put this. That's my suggestion. But I wanna do it quickly.
Yeah, if, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. Well, one of Jackie Chapman, before John Bennett.
Just trying to back on to what Katie, when you look at the pictures of places they have done it, you're not talking the size letter that's on a banner. You're talking the size of each letter is easily, when you, in Washington DC, it's going across four length. Um, so it's six to eight feet per letter. It's, it's a state, it's, you know, because it's, it's, each letter is a big letter, you can't miss it by going down the opposite lane. Um, I just wanted to point that out. When you look at the pictures, you see that statement is right there in front of everybody.
Thanks for that, Jackie.
Tom Michaels. Yeah, we, unfortunately, we don't have six to eight feet, uh, of surface. So we're gonna have to work with what we have. Uh, please keep in mind that, uh, these streets will have to be cordoned off so that this book can take place. And you wanna pick a street where, and it's not heavily traveled, uh, in certain parts of the day, so it's a safe place. And you wanna make sure the individuals that are painting that they're, they're safe is taken into consideration.
Very good. So, if, uh, council is willing to defer, I hear strong support, and it's just a matter of where I'm working on some of the details, and I'd be happy to follow up on behalf of council, so I'll ask for a resolution. Um, I'm gonna ask for a resolution, the City of Portland supports Black Lives Matter and approves a public display of this, of support. Um, and council hereby requests that the mayor work with community representatives to determine an appropriate location and to effect a public display by painting a city street. Okay, so the motion is on the floor from Bruce Tyler. Do we have a second? Kat McCarthy, and now discussion. Basically, it's saying council supports and, uh, asking authorizing the mayor to proceed.
Okay. Just the painting of it could be a great community event, pulling people together. Yeah. I, I like the letters that span the street to make a huge statement, and if you wanna do banners too, by all means, do banners, but the, but the size of the painting on the street makes a huge difference, makes a big statement.
Very good. Kat McCarthy?
I would just agree with what Katie mentioned about, um, community engagement. I think there's a huge opportunity potentially, uh, depending on how it's painted, to think about community engagement and even youth engagement in the community.
It would need to have someone in charge who could make sure it was executed well.
John Bennett?
Remember that the best time to do this would be overnight, when there is no traffic. And we would have to make sure that Chief Canelo knew to have his people block the street off too. So these are all things that you do have to take into consideration. Uh, even though it's overnight or midnight, I'm sure there'll be enough volunteers. But this is not something that's gonna be done in the middle of the daytime. Um,
Good thinking.
I think you could do something late afternoon, you close the street down for Gary Cora, you know, we have in the past many a times, I mean, it's, it's, people really don't understand if we close the street down for four or five hours. They are instantly, so. I agree, I agree, Troy, yeah, we can just close the street down. I trust Nick to work with other people on the, you, you also need someone, we'll get it done right. We'll get it done, we can get this, this is something we can get done quickly. You know, Nick Doby has his hand up. Nick?
At, at night, it's, it's tough because it's moist. There's dew, it's hard for the paint to adhere to the asphalt.
And the paint dries quick anyway, right, Nick?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, are we good with the resolution? So move. Okay, motion is on the floor, I have support. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Gary's eight oh. Uh, what I will do is, I will connect, thank you Melissa and Tim, sharing your thoughts, I will connect with both of you and we will keep talking, we'll continue a discussion about, uh, what makes sense to make sure it goes effectively. Looking at my notes. Okay, so this is officially agenda item number ten. Is there anything anybody else on council would like to bring forward in terms of the discussion? Supporting a conversation on diversity and inclusion in the city of Portland. All right, I'll have updates for everybody on this topic shortly, and in terms of the painting, and we can continue this discussion at our next council meeting.